Good evening, everyone. As Acting Chair, I'm opening the virtual Planning Board meeting for October 11th at 7:05, I think it is. And we'll take roll call. Andrew?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
Mark? You're on mute.
Here.
And Sue?
Here.
And I'm Haley, I'm here. Um. Elizabeth, you want me to just, oh wait, so, sorry, let me pull up the agenda. We're two different agendas sent out. What is the first one that's up? Is it Pittsburgh Turnpike?
The first one is Concord Academy and they've requested a continuance to November 8th meeting.
Okay, oh, so I see, okay, got it. Okay, so what, do we need just a motion then?
No, since this is just a recommendation, it's not the public hearing. You just need to state that the Planning Board's going to continue discussion, continue discussion of this application to the November 8th meeting at 7:00 PM.
Okay, so, since applicant has requested a continuance, we will continue without discussion to the November 8th meeting at, let's say, a time?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. Okay.
So you have 10 minutes before you can take up the next item. So if you like, I can bring up the, I can bring up the A&R Plan.
Great.
So this is fairly simple, A&R, this is Harrington Ave, Ministerial Drive. And then I forgot what's at the bottom. Carvel Spring Road. It currently is two separate lots and the applicant is just looking to combine the two lots.
Will the drainage easement remain after the combination?
Yes. A combination would not dissolve the drainage easement.
I guess it's rare that we're
Yes.
seeing a combination of lots rather than a
It, it is rare. So it's fairly, it's fairly, fairly simple. It's not considered under subdivision control law, it is not a subdivision because they are not dividing the land, they're combining the land. The combined lot will have meet the requirements for the residential B zoning district, which is 20,000 square feet, 125 feet of frontage. The lot will have almost 41,000 square feet and a little over 309 feet of frontage.
Shall I make a motion?
That'd be great.
I move that the Planning Board endorsed the plan by Alfred M. Berry, PLS, titled "Plan of Land in Concord, Massachusetts Prepared for Andrew Rosenschein", dated September 13th, 2022, as approval not acquired because the plan is not a subdivision because it does not show a division of land.
Can I also ask that for your motion, Sue, that you authorize the DPLM Director, the Chair, the Vice Chair and the Clerk to endorse the plan on behalf of the Board?
Yes, I included in that motion that I authorized the
DPLM Director.
DPLM, the Director, Chair, Clerk, and what was the fourth one?
Vice Chair.
And Vice Chair to, oh, I'm sorry.
Endorse the plan.
To endorse the plan, sorry about that.
That's okay.
One second.
And then it just requires a roll call vote, Haley.
Okay, Linda?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, Haley.
So you, by my clock, you still have six more minutes until you can take on the next item. So I don't know, Linda, if you wanted to just start the conversation on the food truck and go over the outline or you're, you're muted.
I'm happy to unless you wanted to take on the minutes.
The minutes, yeah, I will take, if you don't mind Haley, the minutes would be great.
Sure.
So I know we received edits from Sue and Linda, which Heather sent to everybody. I didn't know if anyone had any other changes that they'd like to see.
I did not.
Somebody would like to make a motion to accept the minutes as amended, that would be great.
I don't, we don't need to do it as amended since we all got a copy of the
That's, that is true, and they were posted, so.
I move that we accept the minutes.
September 13th.
Sept- September 13th, 2022.
As written.
As written.
Thank you.
Second. Sue?
I.
Mark?
I.
Andrew?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And I'm a yes for Haley.
Okay.
Four minutes.
Okay, you want me to use four minutes, Elizabeth? I'm happy to.
Well, you can, you just can't take the next item up before 7:15 if you want to just give an opening statement on your outline and then they can move on with the next item, that would be great.
Sure, can, can you put it up on the screen, my little presentation or not?
I can if you give me a second.
Okay.
This is the second.
Okay, I'm, sorry, I had a Word document. So this is just the opportunity to begin the discussion on food trucks. I think we all come to the issue of food trucks with perhaps different expectations in terms of what this article could mean. And so I thought it would be useful to begin by talking about just some basic issues regarding food trucks or mobile food establishments. Really, the beginning is that, that I think we all believe there's benefits to having food trucks in Concord. They provide essentially economic development opportunities, both for entrepreneurs and small businesses, they also add employment opportunities within the town and can support local businesses. They have the potential to add interest, vibrancy and activity to our streetscapes and they can expand the access and variety of restaurant options in a community. As well, they can add diversity to the community, both in terms of options for restaurants, but also options that are not present in, in the community currently. So Elizabeth has drafted a warrant article that provides for the positioning of the new bylaw under the temporary accessory uses zoning area. And I think pursuant to that, really what we have is the need for a collaborative effort, collaborative effort between the Police Department, the Health Department, to some extent Natural Resources, the Select Board, the Chamber of Commerce and schools and perhaps other interested groups in the community like churches. So items that the Planning Board will need to consider would be what is the definition that we consider for mobile food establishments? Obviously, they are trucks that have food inside of them, but possibly carts or other mobile vehicles. And so I think we need to really decide exactly what that definition might be. And then other issues would include really how we go about approving vendors. And, and I'm not going to address comparative issues that other towns have adopted. But given that these are very popular, there are a number of and varied ways that towns have addressed all of these issues. I think we can follow this up with some examples later on. But in Elizabeth's preliminary draft, the Town Manager would be designated as the individual to review food establishments or mobile, mobile establishments.
So
private property or municipal property, and that's, I don't know if we need a comma there?
We, yes.
Okay.
I think there needs to be a comma because the Town Manager would not authorize it on private property.
Okay, so that that answers a number of questions. But in, in addition, the question, there are the questions of whether the Health Director and the Building Commissioner would be involved in the process. I think a number of towns include the Police Department, particularly with regard to safety issues of mobile vending. And then the question is, would there be event approvals or licensures? And then if there are licensures, would they be open to all or would there be limitations in terms of numbers of applicants that would be accepted? And then the question would be, how would they be allocated? Would there be some kind of a lottery? And then as well, once there would be licenses, would they all have to be posted in terms of the, on the trucks? And then there are a lot of questions as well in terms of location and distancing of mobile food establishments with regard to public places. Particularly of interest would be distance from existing restaurants. Would they be at all potential in residential districts? Would there be distances required between that various vendors if more than one is approved? What timing? There could be particularly with regard to any nearness to schools or places of worship. And also would there be protected areas? Many towns have said, you know, they don't want food trucks at their beaches or, you know, near the rail trail or any scenic sites. All of this, I think we need to, to walk through. Then the question is also Elizabeth has adopted a certain criteria in terms of frequency and duration, primarily in private locales, but in public places, would that be up to the Town Manager or would there be some guidance in terms of the frequency of any trucks and how long they could stay and serve? Would they be limited in terms of sales of food only or could they sell other items? Would there be signage or lighting limitations? There are obvious, you know, we have signage and light, lighting limitations in other areas of town. But would we need to update that or make that specific for mobile food establishments? Also, would the sanitation requirements fall under those from the Department of Health or would there again have to be considerations in the bylaws for those? And noise limitations and traffic and parking as well. In, in addition, some towns require insurance documentation and hold harmless requirements for the town. So just in a, a brief swath of four minutes going over time here, these are some things that are on the table, I, I believe, in terms of consideration of mobile food establishments and either we can discuss these later or come back to them with other questions. I, I think it might be useful as well if the Planning Board website could have a section on it for the 2023 Town Meeting discussions so that perhaps we can post some of this information for the public to see and perhaps generate some input and, and with regard to these topics before we just have on public hearings later on this year. So that's my quick overview. Thank you, Elizabeth.
So for the rest of the Board, what I will also do is that there are already licensing requirements through the Health Division under the Food Code, along with different definitions, as well as licensing requirements from the Police Department for Peddler and Hockers License. I will reach out to both of them and get that information together for the Board to review next time. And then Heather and I will begin to post all of this on the Planning Board's Goals and Projects page for your 2023 potential Town Meeting warrant articles.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, do I need to announce what's next or?
Yep.
Okay. So yeah, we're a little over time, but we can go to 48Y, Pittsburgh Turnpike, Planner's Report.
Yep, so from the last meeting, the Board asked that I draft, a draft decision. I did receive a couple of just corrective edits from Linda so I can share the screen and the Board can go through and areas that were new from the last meeting based on the Board's conversation. In red is the edit from Linda. And items that are highlighted are new items based on the discussion from the previous public meetings where the Board has reviewed the decision, I mean, reviewed the project. Clarify the, this is not a public hearing, the Board is just required under the zoning to make a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So this is not a decision, this is just the recommendation. So if there's something, if you want to just go through page by page or specific sections, I leave it up to the Board.
I would also like to apologize to everyone for my lateness. I also sent comments to Elizabeth, but only like a couple of hours ago, which was ridiculously late.
Elizabeth, where in here, I know one topic from last time was the thing about like pervious versus impervious in the sidewalks. I couldn't remember exactly where we were coming out on that.
I think we made a recommendation.
It's right here. Providing the applicant the flexibility to have a gravel or paved sidewalk and allow modifications to the proposed driveways to include porous pavers. And that's reflected and as a draft recommended condition.
I was thinking that rather than gravel, we should say ADA compliant pervious or perhaps porous. Because gravel is rather vague.
Well, the requirement that the sidewalk be ADA compliant is, is a requirement regardless of the, the surface treatment. It will need to be the proper width and the proper slope and a, a hard packed gravel surface that can be maintained and plowed in the winter.
But why require that it be gravel, supposing that for some reason the applicant wanted it to be pervious pavers? I, I'm probably not, but, but why restrict them?
Okay.
Yeah, so you're just saying, don't be so
Don't be so specific, right? Give the applicant the freedom as long as it fits what we actually care about. And that, of course, appears in multiple places in the draft.
Sorry, I wasn't telling you when I'm going to do this, go through it all or I see a hand up?
Well, generally, the Board, as part of your discussion of the draft, does have a conversation with the applicant. You know, on, on different items in the recommendation. But it's entirely up to you whether you want to go through the whole draft first and then come back to items.
I guess let's, let's hear from the applicant right now so we don't lose track of it.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, I, I didn't want to interrupt, which is why I raised my hands, so I'll put that down. I, I would, this may end up being porous asphalt as well. So if the recommendation could just make provision for that as an option, that, that was the only comment that I had here. But I think paved sort of covers that, but I, I leave that to the Board since you're your Doc.
It would be, wouldn't it, that fall under other ADA compliant surface?
I, I think it would. I think we're happy with that. Chris, any comment?
I'm happy with that, Bill.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, if you don't mind, Elizabeth, we could just go through the rest of the highlights.
Beginning?
Yeah, or just, you know, anybody speak up for
So the first one, there's, the applicant is only requesting one waiver to the PRD requirements. And that is the height of the structure based on the fact that it was a previously mined site. So the Board discussed this at length last time.
Any comments on this one? Okay, thank you.
The Natural Resource Director did provide an updated memo which was posted. And her recommended conditions have been incorporated into this draft recommendation and as conditions of approval. So this just references that new date. There was just the issue that engineering raised about a tractor trailer truck not being able to make the turn, which the Board's discussion as far as the volume of traffic that would be for these six homes and not requiring a 24-foot wide roadway, whether the Board believes this is an issue or not. The applicant did provide additional information regarding the transportation demand management options that would be provided for these six residents, along with the Sudbury Development, and it's pretty extensive as far as the options that will be provided. This has also been reflected as a draft recommended condition that they, the applicant provide documentation, which will likely be in the form of information provided in the Homeowners Association documents.
I actually had a comment on that, the wording, it is part of the Sudbury Development seemed odd since we are reviewing the Concord part. And I wondered if it would be better to phrase that as I had some alternative wording I was going to suggest, which was shoot, I'm having trouble finding it, but it was something along the lines of given that the PRD will be able to utilize will be able to use there, I'll search for that. There we go. Stated that the residents of the PRD will be able to utilize avail, various available transportation demand options of the Sudbury portion of the overall development, I thought might be clearer. Maybe nobody else thinks that matters, but that occurred to me.
More, more accurate. Yeah. Because it'll be a standalone PRD.
I will, I will make that.
And you have that wording in the, what I sent you earlier, too late, Elizabeth.
Okay. For some reason, it's not letting me change this, so I will. Okay.
Oh, also, while we were discussing the, the sidewalk. I should have mentioned this earlier, but I noticed that, that the, the draft says south side of the PRD roadway, but. Well, it says a continuation of the sidewalk from the adjacent development along the south side of the PRD roadway. And that's kind of confusing. Does it mean the development along the south side, or does it mean the sidewalk along the south side? Because I think we want the sidewalk to be along the north side of the roadway, because that will be next to the houses.
No, the proposal is to have the sidewalk on the opposite side from the homes.
Oh. Okay, oh, oh, I suppose that way there's less surface. Because there's less roadway, that's inconvenient for the homeowners, but it is a very quiet road, will be.
Well, it also requires, you know, we've, yeah, it's, the proposal is to have it be on the, the the south side of the road. So it continues as a loop.
I see.
That's likely a concession to topography, too.
Correct. I just got to get back to where I was, sorry.
The road coming in will be just for the PRD, or is it, does the road itself actually going to connect into the Sudbury?
No, it will be part of the, the whole development project.
Could be, so cars in the giant Sudbury development could be coming out this road.
If, if you, if you look at the the circulation pattern of the whole project. It, it would be very unlikely because you'd end up in the same spot. The main, main entrance driveway.
Okay.
Would be no reason for somebody to go backwards to come around to get to the same spot.
Got, okay.
This section just references the updated memo from the Natural Resources Director.
I'm gonna share your screen again, Elizabeth.
Oh, sorry. Okay, can you see that now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I will make the changes to this section consistent with the other section. And then the next sections are the conversations that the board had regarding the required findings that the required recommendations that the planning board needs to make to the zoning board of appeals. So I don't know how you want to. A lot of this is referenced previously in the report in different locations. So it deals with again, the connection of the sidewalk. It deals with restoring the site. It deals with the height. The project is as far as the basic density and the diversity of the dwelling sizes under those sections meets those requirements.
I'm sorry, just on, well. I guess we'll start with 10, 4, 2, 3. I mean, I think I, I guess others weigh in, but I, I don't know if I would justify it by saying like, I, I mean, I'm certainly not okay with the diversity in size, but I think the, for that, the reason that we're, you know, just sort of giving in, if you will, is because you know, Sudbury screwed us, not because we're, you know, taking into consideration the Sudbury development, which is actually benefiting from the denser apartments and two family dwellings, so I just, you know, don't want to seem like we're, we're allowing this because there is diversity in Sudbury that's going to get developed. That's just my perspective anyways. Again, it's like so, just in the narrative anyways.
Yeah, so Haley, the alternative, well, I would never suggest that the board put the language seven, you know, Sudbury screwed the town of Concord. You can put in just a, a statement of fact, that that through an agreement between the applicant and the town of Sudbury, who owned the property entirely within Sudbury and Concord. As part of that agreement placed a restriction that only six dwelling units can be placed on this site. That's just a statement of fact that can be added.
Yeah.
I also like that, although I would add the word prior to that, Elizabeth, prior agreement. To clarify that that occurred before this was taken up by the board.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, others, others feel free to, to jump in, but like, just the last, the, the last part of that sentence, you know.
I, I actually have a suggestion for how to completely change the last part of the sentence, because I have a similar concern to Haley. In addition to what you said Haley, I don't really think that it's for the Concord Planning Board to take into consideration in approving of, of the range of diversity and size of the units, whatever happens in Sudbury. And so rather than saying it is providing arrangement taking into, into consideration of the contractual neighborhood, which is a Sudbury development, which is centered apartment, family dwellings. I was going to suggest that we say it meets the requirements of the PRD section of the bylaw in consideration of the small number of units. But I would certainly entertain any alternatives to that.
Yeah, or like it minimally meets the 80.
Yeah, I, I, I would use the word minimal. It, it meets the minimum requirements.
Yeah, I was going to say letter of the bylaw, but then I decided that was possibly all, uh, uh, not quite the same as sat down and Sudbury screwed us, but not quite the right way to word things in an official decision.
So you want me to take the rest of this out?
Yeah.
Yeah, and what do you, what do folks think of saying meets a minimum requirements of the PRD bylaw? In consideration of the small number of units, because I would hate to encourage every future PRD to do something as minimally.
Well, yeah, like.
Compliant.
Oh, it's a special permit, special permits.
It is, yeah. And there really isn't a lot of wiggle room for diversity in only six units, which we're constrained to by the prior agreement with Sudbury.
Well, there could be six different sizes, none of which have four. I mean, there, there are. As far as what, what.
Certainly more could have been done.
We, we've been, the cards we've been dealt, let's put it that way.
Yeah, no, more could have been done, but in terms of how much you can make things diverse and still minimally meet the agreement. The requirements is much less in six, with six units and with more units, that's all I meant. While we're looking at this page, can we look at something at the top of it? The, the previously scored yellow thing, the second paragraph, the last line, it ends with screening from Concord to the north. That makes it sound like the purpose of the screening is to, to screen the development from the rest of Concord. But I thought the purpose was to screen the rest of Concord from the development, and I wonder if we should tweak that wording. Or did I misunderstand the purpose of the screening?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay, so at, at the end of that sentence, it says believes the existing tree line and proposed landscaping will provide sufficient screening from Concord to the north. If it's screening from Concord, then that's screening for the new, the six new homes from the town of Concord, so that the homes won't see Concord. I thought it was the case that the purpose of the screening is so that the rest of Concord won't see the homes, or did I misunderstand that?
Well, I guess I would.
To screen Concord from the development?
I don't remember the screening discussing, I thought they were just adding trees where it was logical. I, I, or, or stabilizing the hillside, I didn't remember there, there being a concern about screening the development from other parts of town, but I may be mistaken.
Well, there was in the sense of we got the elevations that show that the, I don't think it's the proposed landscaping. I think it's the existing tree line shows that despite the requested height exception to 37 and a half feet or the existing tree line would screen. It would mean that you would not see from the north over the tree line to the new homes.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Yeah, and additionally, the given the, the landscaping that they're proposing as far as shade trees, evergreens. Evergreen and deciduous shrubs, that will also provide additional screening in you know, the winter, and so that was my, the, the discussion the board had when you talked about the landscape, looking at the landscape plan.
Okay, so then I would say to screen Concord from the development.
No, it's good to screen the development from Concord to the north. Concord's north of the development.
Well, it is, but it's not, but this says it's screening the development from Concord.
Why not just screen adjacent communities and just make it? If, if that's the purpose, then you don't have to get into, it is part of Concord, so you're not really screening Concord, you're, you know what I mean, it's just, it's less.
I, I guess it can be read ambiguously, whether it, as to what screening from means, and so I will stop fussing about this.
Hey, yeah, I think it's, I think they'll get it, I think they'll get it.
Sure.
So just leave it as provide sufficient screening and just take out.
Yeah, we could take out my change, because that, I mean, take out Elizabeth's change, because that doesn't actually change the meaning, yeah, nevermind.
Um, the next part deals with the discussion the board had about the conformance with the long range plan. So I added about the EV and the solar and the TDM measures.
Another thing I might suggest, and it's been a while since I read the longage plan, but, you know, PRDs are, the intent is to, I think provide, you know, cheaper housing or, you know, smaller homes and and other than the two family clearly not going to do that, so I just might, all the other stuff makes sense, but I, I just, I couldn't remember if that was technically in the long range plan or not.
Well, that my, my only issue is that in the long range planet does talk about smaller homes. But as we've seen with the sale of the homes at Mill Run Commons. They're not any cheaper, I mean, I don't consider a million dollars cheap, I would, you know.
Yeah, but they're smaller, so they have to be a little bit cheaper. These are just going to be extremely large, the, the, the four houses will be very big.
So is there something you'd like me to change?
Um, I mean, maybe just say like while at the beginning, perhaps like while four out of the six homes will be developed as, I don't know.
Hold on, that, that would be while the planning board believes that the majority of the homes will be very large, the proposed project conforms to, et cetera, et cetera. I think would be a more felicitous place for saying it. That while. Hold on, we still need that while there, the planning board believes that while four of the homes will be large, comma. Yeah, now it makes sense. Grammatically. Wait, why is it the for?
Yeah, just delete the, the.
And will be large doesn't really explain to readers, will not provide a useful diversity of a, a, a useful contribution to diversity of homes sizes in Concord. Gosh, that's long.
We can just let Elizabeth.
Fix it up later?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm, I'm fading.
Well, I can suggest wording, it just seems, well, actually, let me ask. On this tonight, because if we're trying to talk tonight, we need to fix it now. But if not, then we can submit wordsmithing comments to Elizabeth for later.
I think, I think we've got to put this to bed, it's, 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 at this point, we're not, we're not talking about anything substantive. We're talking about how the information is presented, or how there was.
For the record, I think, you know, I, I just.
Why?
Why? Because, I mean.
Because it forms a precedent for future meetings.
Yes.
And future applications.
Now, we, we have the ability to do what we want to do in case by case basis.
Yes, but we can also be taken to task for having voted to approve something the next.
You're not, so you're not approving anything. You're making a recommendation to the board of appeals.
I apologize, while we, we could be taken to task for recommending to approve. And it does set a precedent.
It, 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 it's a special permit, it does not set a precedent. Special permits are evaluated on a case by case basis, based on the project, the design, the site. The information provided, there is no precedent setting, because the planning board made a recommendation to approve a PRD. Precedent setting takes numerous, numerous actions regarding the same thing, and there isn't a single PRD that the board, planning board or the board of appeals has not evaluated on an individual case by case basis. So if, if, you know, the four homes will be you can put in you know, the square footage, if that's more appropriate.
Yeah, maybe just like greater than whatever square feet.
What new homes built in Concord are not that size, I mean, I think we have two homes that are half of the size of the average new home in Concord, and I think that's an accomplishment. I don't know that we, you know, have to.
Greater than 4,000 square feet. I mean, yeah, this is a PRD, the whole point of PRDs is to have smaller homes, so. I, I have no doubt that there are plenty of teardowns that are, or subdivisions that we have no control over.
I, I don't think the point of it is anything, I think it's just a, it's a development tool of, of building a lot that otherwise would not be sub divisible, as you can do it this way, I don't think it's to there's nothing in there that requires homes to be smaller. Requires diversity, which this project arguably meets, but it doesn't require anything smaller.
Yeah, but we're talking about our long range plan.
There.
I mean, I'm also fine to move on if, like, I don't know, three out of the five of us don't agree.
My, my take of. My, my take of this is, is we, we've, we've discussed this a lot and sort of beaten it to death. Nobody loves this project, but at the end of the day, they've met the minimum requirements they have to meet, so we just have to write a document we're comfortable endorsing. And, and I agree, I like the idea of wordsmithing it a little bit to take out references that I'm not comfortable with, but at the end of the day, I, I'm not sure it's appropriate to drag this out as much longer.
We're not dragging it out. We're just fine tuning it here at the end, Andrew, and I'm, I'm happy we're addressing what you're not comfortable with, you know. Sue and I are addressing what we're not comfortable with. So I think this is fine as is. Goal of the long range plan is to not promote, you know, NPRDs greater than four thousand square foot homes. So I think this is, this is.
Let's, let's not make the recommendation then. I mean, we don't have to do, we don't have to recommend this, okay? I mean, I was surprised at the vehemence of the citizens' letters, okay? I mean, they, they were pretty pointed, okay? So, I, and I'm just, right up, just, don't love it.
Alright, I, I think that's good. Let's just keep going. Yeah, so I think just flag that four to five to replace with what was, we, we wordsmithed above Elizabeth.
Okay. And everything else remaining is a, a repeat of something up above, which would change based on the previous comments. And then the rest are conditions either based off comments in, from the board or from town staff.
Okay, I found some small grammatical issues. Should I drag us through them or should I let them go?
I think the board would probably be comfortable having you, having me just look at the minor grammatical changes that you suggest.
I will just scroll through to make sure that there is really nothing that changes the content in any way, shape or form.
I think the only last thing I had to just be a hundred percent clear on how we were documenting it was the common open space and I apologize, I didn't see exactly where that ended up, but as far as like documenting everything, but for, just for the sake of what the ZVA will read, i- is it clear that there is no common open space, but that is because of Natural Resources Commission and blah, blah, blah.
So the, as far as the PRD, the area that's within the, that will be within the conservation restriction, that's what's considered the common open space.
Okay, so there's from like a.
But is there a common open space such as?
That's usable, I guess, for the resident.
Mill Run has a, or no. What is it? Concord Culinary Cottage has a little gazebo outback. No, there is, there is no proposed common open space of that nature that's outside of the conservation restriction.
And just as far as, again, documenting, like, have they met the minimum requirement? Well, this whole thing is subjective, like, I can't remember in our PRD, was there like a minimum requirement of, you know?
Yes.
And so is it just documented that there is no, they're, they're basically not meeting that, but it's for a reason?
No, they are meeting, they are meeting all of the requirements of the PRD.
Right, so wait, what I was asking was, so it sounds like there is no requirement of like the com, a portion of the common open space being usable by the residents?
No, there is no requirement.
Okay, okay. Alright, that's all I wanted to make sure I understood.
Okay, there are two small things that I feel I should bring up in the meeting. One is on page four under ten point two point seven. I think that this is a confusion and that the decision here is worded in a confusing way to anyone who reads it. Under, where it says pursuant to ZBL section, et cetera. The second sentence reads, "The site was a former quarry where the natural grade has been drastically altered and is significantly lower." Next sentence, "This existing lower grade artificially raises the building height of the proposed structures because the height calculation is measured from the two lowest existing grades, et cetera." Now, yes, it is a former quarry and the grade has been altered to be significantly lower. But this doesn't explain why if not for the prior excavation on the site, all the proposed buildings would conform to the thirty five foot maximum height. Either that is true becau- if it's low, then the buildings could be built at the bottom of the existing low site and they would still conform to the maximum thirty five foot height. If the reason is that the application proposes adding fill to raise the quarry back up closer to where it used to be once upon a time, then that would make sense, but I feel that this paragraph should say so. And if the point is that the site is at a significant, is very steep where the houses will go, so the two of the corners will be very low, then it's not that the whole site is significantly lower, it's that it's at a significant grade where the houses will go. So it, it's not that this is wrong, but I feel that we should somehow explain why the site being significantly lower means that the buildings would otherwise conform to the thirty five foot maximum height, that's all. And if nobody agrees with me, we can leave it as it is, but I wanted to bring that up.
So is your recommendation just to include a sentence that the applicant is proposing to restore the height of the grade?
Yes, that would be fine, the, 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 the grade prior to excavation of the site, although I don't know how we know what that grade would be. But we could also fudge it by saying, bring it to approximately its original grade. I.
Are they even proposing to do that though?
Um, well, good question. I, I, that, I checked the plans and I couldn't figure it out myself.
Because it's still a steep hill going into the site. What, I mean, I don't know.
You, I, you can ask the applicant, but it's my understanding that the fill is to, to bring up the elevation of the site, so it's consistent across the, the site. The whole entire site, you know, not every piece of, you know, material was taken out. There was taken out in various sections and there's some sections where there's a little mound and that, that's where, you know, they're, they're matching the, the places where not every piece of material was taken out, so they're grading the site to go along with that natural contour prior to the gravel pit. And if the applicant's engineer wants to provide a better explanation than that for the board, that's up to the board.
Matt Leider with Civil Design Group, I'm happy to speak to that if the board wishes me to do so.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I was always confused by that sentence that you pointed out, Sue. I just assumed I was missing something, but if, if it's super brief, sure, but if everybody else is already understanding.
The, the problem has to do with not so much this sentence, it's how height is calculated in the zoning bylaw. It's not the easiest thing to, to interpret.
Yeah, I assumed it was that, but, but I agree on the, just reading the sentence by itself. I, I was thinking to myself, well, if you're just starting from wherever you are today, like, the calculation should be the same. So it was unclear to me exactly.
And here you could, you could finish that sentence, Elizabeth, simply to a higher elevation period, and then I would move that sentence actually before the other sentence. Before, if it were not for the prior excavation, and then I think it would cover, it, it would explain the rest of the paragraph and make it comprehensible to anyone reading this decision who would otherwise be as confused as I was. To a higher elevation? For the finish of, of that sentence? No, no, sorry, I meant to say add after the word site to a higher elevation period.
I'm just trying to think of the technically, you know, what is happening is that soil in earth is being, you know, redistributed on the site to make, you know, the grading work. The site isn't being made higher than what it would have been if there was no gravel pit. As I said, there's portions where it was, you know, the earth was removed and then there's portions where it's, you know, it, it sticks up a little bit where it wasn't touched and then it got removed again, so it's more that the, the grading of the site is, is, there's going to be cut in some areas and, and fill in others to, to level, you know, out the site for, you know.
Then how about this? How about this? The applicant is proposing to regrade portions of the site, period. And yeah. Period. And get rid of the, the stuff after the cursor, and that then allows someone reading this to understand why it is the case that the way grade is measured makes a difference. I'm happy with it now. How do you feel, Haley?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Hey.
Okay, I have one other little thing on page nine. This one is much smaller.
So I think this paragraph is referenced somewhere else, so I will make sure that the sentence is consistent in the rest of the recommendation.
Ah, thank you. Then on page nine. If you see where ten point four point one point one starts, looking at the yellow paragraph above it. No, excuse me, looking right below it, ten point four point one point one A. The applicant states that the project has been designed so as not to impact the surface of groundwater quality. I suggest inserting the word negatively and before impact, so that just in case it somehow ends up positively impacting anything, so as not to negatively impact. I see that some prescriptivist ruined your life as a child. I'm so sorry, Elizabeth, but okay. Negatively, perfect. That way, if it ends up being positive, we can't complain to the applicant that they made things better. That's all. That's it for me. I'm done. Everything else is at the non-meaning adjusting level.
So generally, at this point in time, the board would ask if the applicant had any questions regarding the conditions, recommended conditions.
Yes, I see one hand up.
Thank you. That, thank you.
Go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, Bill Henchy again for the applicant. I had sent an email off to Elizabeth this evening, late this afternoon on proposed condition thirty one, which is the very last one, Elizabeth, you go all the way to the end. And this is on the conservation restriction, which, by the way, we're completely in agreement with. The, the issue that I raised with Elizabeth, and I can share, I, I suggested some new language or edits to this language that solved my problem. The, the issue that I want to raise is that the condition says prior to the issuance of the last certificate of occupancy, and my concern is, is this, the Commonwealth's Office of Conservation Restriction Approval, or Conservation Restriction Review Office moves at a, a glacial pace. I, I can't even begin to emphasize how slow EEA has become in its ordinary operations. I, I mentioned in my email to Elizabeth that I'm currently awaiting a decision on a case that I tried before EEA in December of twenty nineteen. COVID really affected their staffing and their process and they're haven't recovered. So what I wanted to suggest for the board's consideration, and I gave Elizabeth some language on this, is that prior to the issuance of the last CO, that we will have applied to that office with a conservation restriction for approval that has been previously approved by this board, your staff and your town council. And that upon approval by the Commonwealth, we would then record it and failure to record would be a violation of the permit. It, it's just a, a, a process issue. We could conceivably end up having a CO delayed literally for years just because the document's sitting on some desk over Hundred Cambridge Street and we can't get somebody to respond to it. So, so that's my request on that. I'll, I'll stop there and I have one other thing that I'd like to point out to the board, but that was the only issue we had on any of the permit conditions.
So this has been a standard condition for the last few PRDs. It is one that is put forth by the Natural Resources Director, and I think it ultimately gets mirrored in the notice of, I mean, the order of conditions. So I'm incredibly reluctant to wordsmith this condition when it was put forth by another town staff member who is much more knowledgeable about all of this and everything Mr. Henchy is talking about. So while this is only a recommendation, the board, in your letter to the Board of Appeals, can acknowledge that the applicant is still working with the Natural Resources Commission and the Natural Resources Director on the exact language for condition thirty one.
So if I might, Madam Chair, through you, so Elizabeth, your, your feeling is leave this be for the planning board and if the Natural Resources Director and I can come to some other agreement or make that recommendation to the Board of Appeals, you might be, you might be more comfortable with that. So could the, could the proposed condition then just reflect that language or something to that effect? So as not to, so the Board of Appeals doesn't feel sort of foreclosed from making changes if the Natural Resources Director and I can agree? Obviously, to the board's approval.
So I, I would likely just make that statement in this sentence regarding that the applicant continues to work with the Natural Resources Commission and the director on the language for condition thirty one. And just incorporate it in this sentence for the Board of Appeals to be aware of.
As, as long as, as long as there's some explicit recognition to the ZVA that this is something that really is in the bailiwick of the Natural Resources Director, the planning board doesn't object if she's okay. That, that's my concern. Understand that I don't want the board to feel, the Board of Appeals to feel bound by what you guys, well, you understand my concern. How's that for a real articulate wrap up to that sentence? How's that for a real articulate, um, wrap up to that sentence? And, and would it be, would it be possible to say that the board, uh, does not object to a modification provided the Natural Resources Director? Um, is agreeable?
So this is only a recommendation. So the Board of, the zoning Board of Appeals will. Uh, will continue to take information from town staff and from the Natural Resources Commission. Before they move forth with any type of decision. So it, 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 it really isn't up to the planning board to say, we don't object to this language changing.
I, I understand. Okay, um, I had, uh, one other, um, comment, and it was back to the first page. Sure, go ahead. You finish what you're doing.
No, that's fine.
Okay, um, there, there's a statement on the first page. Um, and I, I don't think this matters to the outcome, but I just, uh, little stickler for accuracy on things like this. Um, in the fourth paragraph. That begins with the project site within the town of Concord. Says but has no frontage on Pittsburgh Turnpike. The, the, this, the site in Concord is actually a part of a larger lot that does have frontage on Pittsburgh Turnpike. Um, and I, Elizabeth, I sent you the recorded plan that, that shows that. I would just like, excuse me, that straightened out for accuracy point. But I, I acknowledge it. There's no frontage requirement here under the PRD zoning, so it doesn't matter to the outcome, but if you could make that change, I'd appreciate it. Well, actually, the lot is in Sudbury and Concord, Elizabeth. We, we haven't subdivided.
I'm sorry, I don't understand your statement. This, this project site is the fifteen point nine nine acres in Concord. And it is part of the larger lot. Located in Sudbury.
And Concord, Sudbury and Concord. So the lot encompasses, excuse me, I'm sorry, the lot encompasses the land. In both Sudbury and Concord. There's no.
Fifteen point nine nine acres does not encompass the land in Sudbury. It is a part of the larger. Lot located in Sudbury.
If you took out the words in Sudbury, that would be fine by me.
Well, then it would have to be part of a larger lot. I thought that it was. Perfectly clear as written, given it says that the project site. It refers to the project site in Concord.
Could I, could I share a screen? I can probably show you this very easily with.
No, no, we, we understand what you mean, that it has frontage, that the Sudbury portion has frontage on Pittsburgh Turnpike.
How's that?
Um, that extends. Yes, that's fine. That works. Thank you very much. Okay, um, thank you, Elizabeth, Madam Chair. That, that, and members of the board, that was all I had. Thank you.
I just need to stop sharing and save this before something bad happens.
I, I should say, we should, we should thank the board for its, um, I, I know you may have public comment, but we should want to thank the board for its. Great attention to detail and, and your staff's attention to detail. It's very much appreciated. Thank you. A little painful, but nevertheless, pretty much appreciate it.
So, Elizabeth. We, I know we have three hands up and we are not in a public hearing or anything, but, um. I don't know, is it possible to just limit people to a minute or something and, and do, do the public comment?
Um, it's, it's entirely up. To you and the board. I mean, um, you're reviewing your draft recommendation. If somebody has a comment. On the language in the recommendation as public comment. It, it's entirely up to you. This is not the, the public hearing, but if, if somebody has a comment on the draft language. Um, it's up to the board whether they wish to hear a public comment.
Yeah, let's just go through the three hands I see up. Um, if we can keep it brief. That would be great. Um, Jeffrey Parker, do you want to go?
Yeah, hi. I appreciate it. You guys are all volunteering. It's really hard. I, and I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, you need to state your name and your address for the.
Jeffrey Parker, three one five Plainfield, uh, Concord, Mass. I'm part of a thirty-one person letter that was just deposited today. Everybody in this neighborhood is strongly against this project, like, and, and I, because the views, you were saying that the, today, you were saying the view to the north. Will be screened by the trees. That ridge will be clear cut. It's in the plans. Every tree on that north ridge is going to be cut. Large twenty-one inch trees. These, this is a lot of old growth trees are going to be clear cut. These three homes, one, two, and three, will be in clear view of the rookery and the hundred and thirty acres of wetlands to the north. Which now are full of white pond trails and are pristine. You can't see anything. You'll be looking at these homes. That's why everyone is so upset and mad about this. No height exemption. Please, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Johnson?
I just want to reiterate that the.
Just your name and.
Excuse me, my apologies. Nick Johnson, thirty-eight Bolton Street. I wanted to acknowledge that what somebody said earlier, which was that you do not have to make this recommendation. They are altering the topography of the land within Concord. And I believe it was Mr. Boardman who said, you made a concession to the topography. Well, you will be doing it again if you authorize this height exception. Thank you.
Pamela Dritt, thirteen Concord Green. I noted the town of Concord Water and, uh, Electric Plant. Is this development going to be? Gas or all electric?
It'll be all electric.
I agree, we should not clear cut and change the topography. Please don't recommend it if it's going to do that.
Thank you. That was the most concise public comment ever. So Elizabeth, are we at the point where we decide if we want to vote, vote or? Do folks feel like we're ready? Andrew does. Or did, uh? Where did our other guy go? Did we lose one? Where's our last board member?
Where's Mark? And don't we need five people for a special permit? Or do I have that wrong?
No, this is, you are not the special permit granting authority. You are only making a recommendation. So you need a core of members, which is four. I don't know where Mark went.
Okay, so Sue, Linda, you, you want to vote?
It seems like we've reached that point. That is to say, um. I'm not sure what else there is to discuss that we haven't already discussed.
So is it that we're voting on?
Somebody can either make a, make a motion to recommend that the Board Appeals. Grant the special permit to develop a six-unit planned residential development pursuant to section. Ten, section eleven six, and section eleven eight for forty-eight Y Pittsburgh Turnpike. Based on the board's recommendation letter dated October twelfth as amended tonight.
Linda, you on?
You're on mute, Linda.
I'm looking, I'm seeing the, um. So I moved that the board. Uh, accept the draft letter as.
Um, so, no, no, so the, um, it would be reading this paragraph right here.
Okay, I move that the board recommend to the Board of Appeals. A special permit to develop a six-unit planned residential development pursuant to ZBL section ten. PRD section eleven dot six, special permit. And section eleven dot eight, site plan review, forty-eight wide. Forty-eight Y Pittsburgh Turnpike.
Um, and it would be, um, based on the board's October twelfth letter as amended tonight.
Based upon the board's October twelve, twenty twenty-two letter as amended tonight. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yes.
Andrew?
Yeah, although with Sue, I'm a very reluctant yes.
Linda?
Um, yes.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. Three, three with one extension. Um, next on the agenda is. I don't know what's next on the agenda, sorry. Potential zoning bylaw amendment discussions. Um, specifically, the board was going to discuss the. I think Sue had mentioned this a couple of times, um, just a general discussion about the Thro Depot Business District warrant article. And whether to, um, put that forth, um, again, for consideration. Um, the board has also been reviewing, uh, draft. Um, amendments to the existing combined business residence bylaw, which is, um. And, um, I apologize, I did not, um, get the restaurant. Fast food, um, bylaw updated. I will have that for you in your next meeting. So I think it's. It's currently just a discussion on whether you wish to move forward with any amendments regarding the Thro Depot Business District or the combined business residence. And I can bring both of those up or. Um, you're also down. Um, Nathan's not here and Mark's not here, but you're generally running out of time. You have six meetings. Between now and the time the warrant closes. Which reminds me, Heather, can we do the calendar for next year?
Yes. I know you're fading, Elizabeth. Um, sorry. Not at all. Um, I have not, the Thro Depot zoning warrant article, I saw, um. I have not gone through that. I don't know if anybody else has, but, um.
Well, that's the one from last year. The question, if I understand correctly, is, um. Shall we bring back last year's failed article and try again now that more people have had time to mull it over? And I was very surprised to see the housing production plan forum. Unless it was a different, similar meeting that. Nobody seemed to be in favor of bringing it back as is amongst those groups. And if even they don't support it, I don't see how we would get it through without changes. I wish we had found out why they don't support it and we could go to them and we could ask them, send them a letter or something. But as Elizabeth points out, we're running out of time.
Which there's, I mean, there's, there's no, sorry, Linda. Uh, there's, I mean. This is the, the conversation that the board has. And if the, you know, the, the board feels that the Thro Depot warrant article, you know. You know, needs another, just another year of. Going around and getting feedback and making changes and bring it forth for twenty twenty-four. Uh, I mean, it. Bylaw amendments, it took where, uh, let me see where Concord Park is. Um, and the Marriott Residence Inn. Um, it, it took three town meetings to get those, um, through. So, um, you know, it's, it's not something that the board is required to do. If, you know, if the board feels it, it, you know, it needs more work, so. Go ahead. Sorry, Linda.
Um, no, not a problem. Um, no, I, I feel that, um, I'm very supportive of. Thro Business District Amendment, but I'm not supportive of bringing it back without. Both, uh, substantive review in terms of, um, items that may need change. If any, and also substantive work in terms of communication, uh, behind it. So I, I feel that just to bring it back as is. Um, is. Is sort of like saying, you know. Either we're hoping that people change their minds without giving them a reason to do so, or we're hoping that, um. They understand it somewhat better than they did before, or, or just that we didn't want to take. The fact that it, it didn't pass, um, at, as a indication that we didn't think it was. Um, the, the will of town meeting. So I, I, I feel uncomfortable with bringing it back as is without some. Substantive effort behind it.
That's pretty much where I am, that, um. I wish we had been talking more to other groups around town to find out. What it is they do or don't support about it and what it would take to, um, make it be better accepted, but we have not been doing that. A lot of time has passed.
It was an offer, I thought, right after town meeting by a small group of folks from other. Town committees to. Try to work through it and troubleshoot and whatever, but I don't think anything ever came of that. Um.
So I think now it would probably, um, once you figure out what to, as far as getting your warrant articles submitted. Now that the housing production plan is going to wrap up by the end of the year. That, that would probably be a good time to pull all those groups together and, and start that conversation about. Um, you know, whether to amend, you know, whether to amend the Thro Depot and how to amend it, the bylaw. Or whether to look at just amending the combined business residence district. Um, I mean, bylaw itself for all of the commercial districts and, um, to start that conversation. Once the housing production plan is completed.
So we're not really making a commitment right now exactly what our plan of action will be with regard to a warrant. It's just a matter of whether we start exploring it for this year, you mean, like?
No, you, you, you either decide right now what kind of amendments.
What form?
Want to make to the warrant article if you're going to put it forth because it closes on January sixth. Or not to move forward with the existing article. And instead have the conversation with the housing groups and other groups after the housing production plan is finalized.
So if we chose not to move forward, to clarify what Andrew said, we wouldn't be saying we disapprove of this article. In general, or that we wouldn't put it on some future. In general, or that we wouldn't put it on some future warrant, but either we have to support it strongly right now or push it off until the future, if ever. Future year, if ever, yeah.
Correct.
So is it in your mind, Elizabeth, like, an either? Either or, or neither, as far as the. Thorough Depot versus combined residence business district?
I'm, I'm only speaking to the initial conversation about whether to put forth the Thorough Depot warrant article again, which. The, you know, what I'm hearing, the consensus is not in its current form, and if it's not in its current form and you want to get more input and bring in different groups and conversations. Then. Then I'd wait till after the housing production plan is completed.
Well, I might even like it in its current form, but I just don't see that we would be prepared to do that for town meeting 2023 without having talked to more people. And we might want to change it as well.
Which, that would be.
Which is what you said, I was just.
Which is very challenging over the next. Two months.
Right, I don't see us doing it over the next two months. I just wanted to say, my problem with it isn't necessarily the way it's written, I just don't see how we can move forward with it for. Town meeting 2023, although others may disagree.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. It's not that, not that it might not come back in exactly the same form next year, it just isn't ripe to do that. We haven't laid the groundwork yet.
Yeah, I agree.
May I suggest to Ms. Ritt that if her hand is left over from before she raised, she lower it, and otherwise, I'm sure the chair will take it up in the course of time later. She may have gone to get a cup of tea.
Nope, I'm patient.
Okay, so I think we're, the four of us anyway, seem to be agreeing that. We, it should be taken up, but not, it's not gonna happen for 23, and we wait for the housing production plan to finish, and then we. Go out to. The community.
Okay, sounds good.
Then how about the combined? I admit. I've lost the thread on exactly.
Combined business residence.
Yeah.
So the current draft from August incorporated. Certain sections as far as the open space requirement and, and the affordable housing requirement, so. Again, there's. People in the community raised issues and concerns with both of those as well. The question comes down to whether the board feels that. It can get enough input from stakeholders and housing groups and open space groups. Over the next six meetings, two months. To put forth a warrant article. Or if. This should also be in tandem with the discussion after the housing production plan is completed.
And they, but there wasn't the original idea in amending this, like, that it would be in lieu of moving forward with Thorough Depot?
Well, some of the comments that the board received, at least from the affordable housing community and that specific section. Was in support of defining. You know, what affordable housing means, what the town wants, which is currently not in there, there's, it doesn't define it at all. And also providing the ability for fractional payment for fractional units. So, you know, that was something that at least the affordable housing community was in support of.
So this one, I mean, it sounds like. Oh, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe more. Like slightly easier to bite off and, and get done for this town meeting, but I don't know, how do others feel? I like the idea that it addresses more than just, you know, the Thorough Depot area.
So, and again, the board has, you know, the planning board over history has, you know, you, you move forward with, you know, one small portion and. You know, see if it works and get the kinks and then move forward to a larger portion. The, the board can take the existing combined business residence section and just amend the affordable housing section to. You know. Define affordable housing, define, you know, whether you have units, you know, on getting units included in the subsidized housing inventory. And the provision for fractional in lieu payments, so you, you can amend the bylaw just to incorporate that section. And then, you know, work on, you know, other issues that were raised.
Do we have to decide exactly the scope of that right now, or can we just?
Um, no, I mean, what I can do is I can, I can take the existing draft and just mock up what that would look like for the board to look at at the next meeting.
I, I really like the idea of doing that, that, that at least if we can't get, if we can't get everything we want, or everything that would be great to, you know, accomplish today. At least we can move forward with, with improvements as we see them coming, and then it's not a. Yeah. As you say, we can iron out the tanks later.
I personally think we ought to move forward with something. There are a couple of things that I think we should consider changing in the draft, but. I think it's generally going in the right direction.
Linda?
I would agree, I, I. I guess on this, I'd sort of like to get the sense also where Nathan stands with it, but. I, I think it would be good to. To move forward in. Especially with the affordable housing component, I, I think. Just because I think I would like to see more activity and progress on our part in affordable housing, and I think that would be a. Nice step to. Make and to work together with the affordable housing community, which I, I think. Would also probably like to accomplish something this year.
Okay, well, I will. I will amend this to, to show the changes as far as the affordable housing section. And then the board at your next meeting when Nathan and Mark are on. You can. Compare that to the existing draft, which also includes amendments to the open space. And parking, and you can decide. Whether to incorporate one, both, or all three.
Or, or could we bring them as three separate proposals as opposed to?
Um, you know, I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to look at that. More, more, more than likely, yes, more than likely you could. Because they're standalone features.
Can I raise? A small issue, seeing as how I just finished reading the entirety of the zoning bylaw front to back, which I had never done before. I noticed that in the dimensional table, which is table three. That all of our business districts. Are fairly similar, but differ slightly, and in particular, there is something that West Concord has, which. The rest of Concord does not have, which seems unfair. I realize why West Concord has it, it's because of the West Concord Task Force, but after over a decade of trying it out, it seems to have worked pretty nicely, maybe the whole town should benefit, which is under. Maximum feet in height. In the West Concord Business and West Concord Village, after saying maximum height thirty-five, it says minimum height side and rear fifteen feet. Minimum height front facade eighteen feet, and if we threw that in for the other districts, it would be. More uniform and would allow us to simplify the table. There's no particular reason we would have to do that this year, but since we're already talking about business districts. It's something we might fold in either as a separate article or part of the same article, but if people think that it just seems irrelevant for this year, why bother? I'll take that as an answer.
I might need to just digest that.
Okay, and there's another thing, I really wanted to bring it up this night, tonight, because if the answer is, well, I don't know, let's let Elizabeth mock something up and we'll look at it, then. I would hate to bring it up at our next meeting when two more weeks would have passed, but now I could throw it out there, people would have heard it, and we could think about it later and do something or not do something.
Well, yeah, I mean, between you, Sue, and Elizabeth, you're probably the best ones to weigh in as to how that came to be for West Concord and.
Which, which section?
This is table three, dimensional regulations. Under the column for maximum height. For all the business districts, it says thirty-five feet, but under West Concord Business and West Concord Village, it goes on to specify a minimum height. One for side and rear and another for front.
Okay.
And we could make it be uniform across all the business districts if we thought that it was a nice idea, using the same language everywhere. For all, 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 and of our business districts. About minimums.
I, I think that is something that would, one, require research on how that got adopted, which it might have been part of the whole. West Concord Master Plan and Design Guidelines, which have not been done for the other village centers.
Well, that's true, but since we tried it out in West Concord and it seemed to work well, and I can tell you that the reason was in, for purposes of sustainability.
But that might not be appropriate for the Thorough Depot.
So what, Sue, was the idea that just that, you know, something more than a single-story building is built, or what?
Yes, it was to encourage buildings not to be single-story California-style sprawl in, in downtown centers.
I, I think there may be people who would. Object to that requirement on Thorough Street. There's quite a few people that would, don't want to see even a two-story building. So I don't think it's an easy, I don't think it's an easy amendment.
Okay, then we had better not, I, I still think it's a good idea, but if it's not easy, we had better not take it up at this late time in the year.
I mean, it clearly helps accomplish what we want to see accomplished through, through business district, but not, you know, by doing a smaller amendment, but.
And, you know, nine, nine-acre corner, the impact that, you know. Even though people don't understand, you can, you could build a thirty-five-foot, you know, two-story, two-and-a-half-story building at Nine Acre Corner. You know, the impact it would have on the adjacent open space and, you know, protected agricultural land and the vistas of that agricultural land. There's, there's a lot more to think about when you, when you think about changing the height of something allowed.
Now, you have a point about Nine Acre Corner.
Maybe come back to that when we, next time. I mean, I think we're gonna have to go out and just get community feedback, no matter what, but. Sounds, sounds like not an, an obvious, easy thing to do.
Okay. I think that's it. And I'm freezing.
Don't we have to officially continue the.
Oh, yes.
Concord Public Schools?
Uh, well, you don't have to officially do it, but yes, Haley, you should just note that. The applicant has requested a continuance to October twenty-fifth. That can be at seven fifteen.
Okay, um, so, uh, the applicant has requested a continuance without discussion to the October twenty-fifth meeting to allow additional time to address issues and concern raised by town staff. At seven fifteen on October twenty-fifth. Does that work?
Yep.
Was that everything on our agenda other than? Public comment?
And I, I have no updates. I don't know if other board members have liaison updates.
I can just briefly say that CPC has been meeting regularly, we're getting, there are a couple of good proposals, we're having meetings, and you should all attend, they're interesting. That's it.
Yeah, and the West Concord Advisory Committee continues to do good work, but there was nothing that needed to be conveyed tonight.
The Select Board, I believe their meeting is on the seventeenth, will be reviewing Christopher Heights Junction Village. Again, so if anyone wants an update, that's probably the best place to get it.
Great, um, quick public comment, Pamela?
Pamela, thirteen Concord Green, Unit Four. I think there's a large amount of the public that voted against these because they do not include any of our sustainability goals. They include our desire for walkability, for, for. Friendly neighborhood feeling and, and visuals, but not our sustainability goals, and those are more important. I think than how it looks to a great deal of the people in the town. Can. There's a very good possibility that we will not get our all-electric. Trial as one of the ten communities, especially since we're losing Christopher Heights. And so therefore, it is up to the, I believe it's the planning board, is there some other? Town committee that has control over what our building requirements are? Must find some way to incentivize. All-electric. And electric vehicle charging, there's all kinds of things about parking and not one word about access to electric vehicle charging. All of the electric, all of the vehicles are going to be electric in a less than ten years, the vast majority are going to be. We've got a plan for it. And since we can't. Force, because we don't have the zoning, we've got to incentivize, and, and you guys have to do it. That's why I voted against the, the Thorough District. Because it had nothing about incentivizing environmentally sound building. You can make environmentally sound buildings look just as good and exactly the same as the non-kind, but if you don't incentivize them to do it. Builders are, are conservative and they want to do it the way they've always done it, and they won't change unless we force them. Or incentivize them, since we can't force them, and that's you guys' job, that's why I couldn't vote for that. I, I think we should have tall buildings in the, in the urban centers there, they can look very, very good and not.
Thank you, I think. You know, if it doesn't show up this year, it'll, it'll be next year, but even we'll, we'll hope to have site plan rules and regs updated well before that, and I, I think that will help. Clarify how sustainability will be incentivized and forced, whatever you want to call it. That's, that was my idea, my thinking anyways.
Electrification.
Uh, well, again, we can't. Require all-electric unless we get this, you know, we are one of these ten communities, but. you know, we are one of these ten communities, but, um, otherwise site plan review, rules and regs would dominate the review of applications coming in under, you know, what would have been thorough depot development, um, and, and in there is where we've been working on sustainability, so.
And particularly with the planned residential developments.
Well, yes, the special permits we can, because it's entirely subjective, can require or ask for all-electric, as you just saw in the last development, um, but not, not as far as, you know, all these, anything that falls under site plan rules and regs, so.
It's just, you guys are, are clever and, and wonderful. You can come up with some ideas for doing it, surely, or, or people in the community can. Ways of encouraging and incentivizing since we can't require.
Thank you. Carol?
Hi, um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One was the, um,
Name and address, please, for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carol Savoy, sixty-one Bellknap Street. Um, the combined business residents that you're talking about, there's sort of four components to it. The height, the affordable housing, parking and open space. And those are really the four key components that drive development and drive housing and on the throw the depot, those were the four key components. So by saying you're not doing the throw depot, but you're going to do combined business residents. And if you make those changes, you're going to get the same result as you would with the throw depot and that you can build more housing, right? Uh, so I wanted to just make that comment. Um, it just seems like, I, I believe this is what um, you guys discussed and thought thorough depot was too, um, too much to it. And if you just focused on the main things, which are those four cat, uh, categories that, you know, you'd get the same result, so. Um, you know, I kind of feel like you're just repackaging it, if you will. Um, the second point I'd like to make, or just get an understanding, um, if you're taking it just a component by component, such as affordable housing, or breaking it up into three different things. So kind of again, repackaging it so it doesn't look like the same warrant. Uh, that, um, how much actual housing are we going to get now that we're going to have it across town, right? The whole intent is to get more housing. You know, with the road depot, we knew there was roughly, you know, a hundred thousand, a hundred new units if you did those changes that you're requesting, which are similar to the combined business here. And of that, it was roughly, you know, ten percent or something, affordable housing. And of that, like, half of that was going to S H I, right? So I think what we're trying to get a feel for is if you're changing this town ride, what will that mean? How many units can you get in downtown Concord? How many units can you get in West Concord? And how many units can you get at nine acre corner as well as thorough? Um, and I think the town is, you know, people voting are going to want to know that, right? Um, that's kind of important. So, uh, you know, I was wondering, you know, how you would respond to those two items.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we, obviously we don't have an answer on the latter. Um, well, we can think about that, but, um, I mean, on the former, I don't think we're saying we're gonna just take all the exact same pieces from throw depot and like hide them in the four things of combined residence business district. Um, it's not, clearly wasn't what we were saying. So at a minimum, we're just going to address the feedback from the affordable housing community, um, is my understanding, but the scope is to be defined, but um, I don't think anybody's under any illusion. We're just gonna, you know, take everything from the road depot and put it into combined business district.
Well, if you look at combined business district, the four main drivers, which are height, affordable housing, parking and open space, that's what's in combined business district, right?
Yeah, but we aren't saying we're going to address all four of those.
Well, you said, you started the conversation tonight saying we're going to talk about affordable housing. Go ahead, Elizabeth. Did you want to say something?
You're on. Yeah, no, I, um, I have to go. I'm about a hundred and two right now, so.
Yeah.
Um, sorry.
Now, I think, I think, you know, Carol, the short answer is we're not going to address all four. So, um, so you asked for our answer and that's the answer, so.
Right, but my point is, you know, even if you pick them off one at a time, you're still going to get to the same result, right? So.
Not necessarily, because although we could address all four areas, we could do something different than was proposed originally for thorough depot.
Yeah. You know, you heard us say that we're not willing to move forward with things without more community feedback, so, uh, we're not presupposing what we're going to do right now.
Okay, yeah, uh, but it would be, as you go down affordable housing to determine how much would be uh, how many housing units per business district that this change would make. And how much would go to affordable housing and particularly how much would go to S H I, right? Because that's what we're trying to, you know, meet that target. So those are important things that I think the community is going to want to know.
Sure, understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's it, guys, right? Uh, Elizabeth's gone. Do I need to make a motion to close?
Yes. Oh, no, no, you're the chair. You can just end the meeting.
Oh, all right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good night.